Okay, welcome everybody to East Wally's regular board meeting. Uh, it'll be Monday the second of 2022. I have six o'clock. Kevin, you ready?
Trusty Molly, here. Trusty Rosie. Trusty Brighton, here. Trusty Sagnano, here. Trusty Driver, here. Trusty Sager, here. And Trusty Line, here.
And if you're right to meet with the president. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the raising and just as strong. Thank you.
Now, thanks to item number four, which is public comment on agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda item? See none? Okay, so consent agenda, which there is none. Okay, uh, we're going to move up in the other agenda items, number six. One of the items, we're gonna put the item D. Uh, we're gonna go with that one first. If we can move that one up to A, so might get a motion for that.
So, since it's just direction, discussion, and direction, I'm going to do it in the top right.
No, they just wanted to move it up to item. Okay, second, wait.
All in favor?
Ayes. Okay. That is, uh, discussion and direction on request from Deuce Blues Bar Review. Ew, what you got?
Ah, good, good. Uh, hello, everybody. Glad to be here for this four months. Um, the Blues Fest, wait, I didn't.
You're late, man.
Yeah, so the Blues Fest is, uh, we're looking forward to the June tenth and the eleventh. Uh, we're gonna put out like our music lineup, um, this Friday. So originally, it's all something Eric, I was talking with the chief, so I'll see the chief. But anyway, when I was talking with them, I wanted to close off the streets, but then I kind of enabled something differently to our sense of you not thinking that kind of could be like a smoother flow. So that way, kind of, probably all of them together, everybody could be happier. So kind of go along with their business, their business. So, uh, we're looking to not like close off the, the, the street where Diamond Gem is. Is that, is that, is that, is that Meyer? Meyer Street, so just be like the parking lot if we need it. Like somewhere over there with the vendors to see how many brokers we have coming up or whatever. But there's a lot of, I'm sorry. What am I talking about?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, there's a lot of brokers too. Uh, a lot of people who kind of invested and sponsored the Blues Fest. And now because of that, because of the amount of people, and what we're expecting, a lot of people are like, hey, well, I want to have a tent or a booth there, and because we want to honor their sponsorship package. We want to make sure that we can put them somewhere. So that in part, so is what I wanted to utilize is the, like, the depot area for it. Also for extra seating for like the overflow. And, uh, originally, I think I closed off the street and put people in the street. But then I was like, no, I don't need to do that. So I have a club that I have the parking, and it'll be open for them to park and they go sit back. And then they can go around the other way to get into time parking lot here. So we'll just close off the entrance where it'd be going west of like the Black Drive. Just that, just that little spot, you know? Like, so, so you can get in from, if you're coming from Barrington going, uh, eastbound. And then you look in and get to the parking lot. And then if you want to go through that parking lot, which is in front of that, it does, you still can look around. So it's not gonna mess up the flow, so I don't need to expose anyone.
So not even close street?
Nah, it doesn't, it's like a person, uh, like, if I'm like a partial, um, I don't have the front or whatever. I don't know, Meyer or something. Ah, ah, cool, yeah, so.
I see two fair lanes from about Third Street to like halfway to the Black Drive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if simple, so we can still do like a one-way flow of traffic. And I have, um, I talked to the chief, so I'm gonna have, uh, I'm gonna meet up with them. Cause I have quite a few officers from like Hall, Metzheimberg, and, uh, Cool Task Force from the city of Chicago. Who's gonna kind of be security and checkpoints and also kind of help like, you know, lower the traffic. So they'll bring all their credentials to, to the chief here in the venue, so. Sorry, guys, on the second pitch.
And now my whole, um, ID checks, of course.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And also, um, I'll just follow up with that too. Um, no liquor is gonna go past the parking lot of the booth, you know? So like, like even though that's gonna be overflow, like the depot, liquor checks right at the, at the, at the entrance. If you're coming in off of by Delores Avenue, if you're not, that's next to the turn right there. But yeah, that would check for us, that for sure.
So apart from traffic, apart from road closures, um, you know, support and so forth, fencing, uh, what about port lines?
Yes, um.
Yeah, that's an issue that I didn't see mentioned in any of the papers, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I think, I think I've opened port lines this year. My opinion from my board wants twelve, so I'm gonna have twelve port lines. I think this is very much, but better be safe than sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to remember last year, um, this is the second quarter, I think?
Nah, this is, uh, third, fifth, or sixth quarter. Yeah, it's the fourth quarter.
Trying to, trying to remember the size of the proud lines, do you?
We had the nice size proud, man, but like last year, so last year was mostly like local, you know? And which I always want to try to get everybody moving and proven as far as, you know, people try to keep it local as possible. This year is gonna be a little bit more of a taste of myself, I suppose. So I have my cousins, so my family, um, five of my cousins are staying Saturday down south. My parents, they're gonna come up, the seven, 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 they're gonna come up for it. Uh, and then we're gonna have like Matt supporting my old area, so they're creating like a band, uh, uh, group of boards. Stuck here for a while, and we're gonna buy some time. And I, I started running it about ten years ago. So I got her contract, so she's gonna play. I'm gonna have Buddy Guy as owner, she's gonna be, uh, uh, the closer on Saturday night. So, and then I have, uh, Debbie Crown's marching band on Friday, they're gonna start. And which I'll, like, talk to you guys about that, so you guys can receive some feedback. So when I met with the superintendent, I met with Debbie Crown, I was ideally thinking, like, everybody in Black Drive. And kind of like marching in one single line, cause it sounds great. And everybody looking at me like I was going nuts. Um, like, you know, he's a festival person. So, um, I wanted to kind of do, if it was cool, I talked to Ollie, uh, he's your buddy of mine. He said that we can start over there, but I wanted to see if this, maybe if we maybe can close, I don't know, like, just this street for maybe like thirty minutes or so, just so the marching band can line up and just march from, from like this point over to the Blues Fest instead of marching for Friday's part. Because I think that, uh, the feedback I received from maybe the friends from Debbie Crown is that a lot of this, they have heavy, um, influence, and they might be a bit far from, you know, to walk. So, um, I'm hoping to get some justice in regards to that, since they're gonna be opening up the thoughts of one Friday.
Why not line them up on Close Street, where you'll have closure?
That's cool.
Just a thought, I'm just asking.
I'm fine.
It's not bad.
That sounds great.
I'm just thinking like a funny guy with the marching band, it's gonna draw some attention. But I'm afraid of the grand, the whole attention being drawn by the marching band.
Yeah, that's, I was just drawing up bids out there, whatever, it's the reason why I was thinking, I wanted to, you know, I kind of, I drink big sometimes, I suppose. But I was just thinking about, like, you know, from this, the second, I remember down south, like, you know, the place where we had like, they like, like one down to like the Grand, and he was watching like a lot of the, this little like football, you know, like the marching bands. A lot of times we started in like the neighborhood, like neighborhoods that were closer to the university, like marching bands. So I think that was my original rhythm, but I'm totally free with that, whatever, maybe like five years from now, maybe. Yeah, so yeah, that's cool.
Um, and then, so I'm, I'm just trying to see, so there are a couple SUV port qualities over actually at the depot? Or are they gonna be mostly?
We wanted to display it up more so because of like the crowd. So I wanted to put some on the back by kind of my save area. Cause we're not gonna have a heating tent this year, since it's in June, September, July.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, it's, uh, not the greatest in Florida, you know, this year, that's.
That for sure.
Okay, yeah, I see you. I'm just saying, I'm just looking through all the things, trying to figure that out.
Oh, that's cool.
So, hey, so we've got one on Saturday, what time do you start on Saturday? And you spoke with the depot market close?
Yeah, yeah, so Bill and I, we're supposed to have lunch, uh, I think tomorrow, lunch. Only thing is we, Bill and I are gonna kind of coordinate, so like, so, it's a great day. Um, and I wanted to kind of like, you know, whenever I wanted to do something, I just try to get everybody involved, you know? So I'm gonna coordinate with him, so I'm gonna add him in the Blues Fest, you know? Like, you know, coordinate, same with what I did last year, like, hey, like, so your people, like, just make sure, you know, that's an option, stuff bigger than that, and they look, you know, great, you know? There's gonna be a lot of people down there, but yeah, for sure, I wanted to coordinate that with them too. Cause I, I don't see no need to stop on Saturday anymore, cause they can make the construction out of it, you know?
Sure.
That's for sure.
So they usually go to the, to the website, like, end up leaving earlier, whatever, based on weather or what, whatever's going on? So then, I'm sorry, I don't know your calendar, when it starts on Saturday?
Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Um, Saturday, Saturday starts with the vendors to be prepared, um, for at eleven, but ideally, I don't want to start. I mean, I, I say the date themselves early at eleven, you know, but that's not gonna enter the depot. You know, that's as well as the overflow, you know? When I say the date, as far as over there, it starts early at eleven, but everybody has to be up ready by noon. And that's how I know it's available, you know, so glad everything cleared out.
And so you're asking for the tables, the use of the depot?
Yeah.
Um, the hill three floor, or is there something fencing?
Yeah, if you guys like, I know before with, uh, Brad, and then, uh, so they were telling me that you guys have a lot of fencing at David's over the years, like that white fencing, you know? Like, where it's here, you know? So like, I don't know if you guys have enough fencing to like, I don't know, should I say, you know? So I guess I'm, I guess once I kind of get that, you get to come and see if we have, I think, determinative, we can use it or not, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
Um, I don't know whether you're giving concerns or just?
Uh, the only concern I have is, is whether there are more people than that spacing naturally can take. Because by the sound of the fencing, um.
Maybe turning people away.
When more people show up, then there's actually space available for people to congregate. So that, that's my concern, but otherwise, it's very, everything else you can work on the detail, man.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sorry.
I just said, okay.
Absolutely. Well, this is why I look at that very, to be honest with you, cause I think that, um, I think that amazing. You know, obviously, like, I'm a nation of manpower, control, and crowd, keep everybody safe. Cause I think that, say, if you're scared of, you know, I think people tend to spend money, so relax, they feel safe, you know? So, uh, that's number one for me. But I think that I wanted to like, I know I got to get on the board, you know, well, pretty much I have every part of the town on board. But he's the last one to be like, everybody pretty much around here. But I think the beer and capitalizing most down here is the fossils down here. And I think what I want to do is tell everybody, like, be kind of prepared, you know, like, have it, like, I'm praying fingers crossed for a beautiful week. And then, you know, like, you know, open your patio up and hey, if the people can't get in step fast and you can't let them in, hey, go to dive into this, drink for a little bit, and you see the crowd kind of move, and will let you know when people can regent or stuff like that, you know? Like, go to, you know, Van Ude, just, you know, go to out of bars throughout town and then, you know, just kind of keep the cool vibe, kind of go and see them and check out, and things like that. So have a cool time.
That, that's why you brought that up, cause that means you're managing the numbers that are coming in.
Yeah.
And then you're turning people into like, to a point where there might be room to let more.
Correct.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
I don't know how I feel about the clicker, but I would like to purchase a clicker, just a click.
I think we've got one.
Can you get my Cray, bond, and monsoon, and air cut?
No. I'm looking for, I have a book.
Hey, Buddy Guy's daughter, I'm, I'm already.
And like, another thing that's really cool, like, I know you guys, like, Mark, uh, Mark Baxter, Mr. Baxter, who was like a teacher at Debbie Crown for a while, for a long time. He planned on some Friday night, you know, he, he like, I was stoked about it, breaking his cap, man, he's gonna play some, some great song pretty early in the year. And then I have like Shereen Reed, who played, who played with, uh, Rita Franklin, he was, he was her bass player, and I played some fun delirs. They're playing on Saturday too. I'm just really happy that a lot of people can kind of come to that, they kind of see what it's about, you know, and I do. I think it's a pretty, pretty revered, you know, so.
So, do we have any issues with stadium?
Nah, not yourself or electrically gone to it. Nah, 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 so like, so what, buddy of mine, so, uh, I got some big sponsors, like, I got like, Rick Hired, buddy of mine, he's sponsored, you know? Rule One, like, Rule Five, Trump, President, buddy of mine, sponsored, and so we're all set about that stuff, you know? Like, pretty much, you know, just tell them what they, I tell them that, and stuff like that, so we're, um.
So I think the chief certainly needs to win, um, the, the, the fan takes, the.
Yeah, 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 for sure. Uh, you know, the, the checkpoints for the band, they're gonna come out of the garbage can. So like, that's, like, I, I think they should go to that, like, little block, little areas gonna block up. So there's some security right there, checkpoints for security, or checkpoints for bands, to kind of get them in, you know? I think we're giving people like thirty minute window, but I'm telling people like, uh, maybe fifteen, cause we're gonna have like the, a full backlog. So I think the music, I don't know anything about music, but everybody's like, yeah, full backlog, that sounds amazing, I'm guessing that's what they did? But, uh, what I said to the waiting there was, uh, they don't have to bring a national, they just have to bring like, they got a special like microphone or something. So it's like, eat their stuff up and play, and you get off and save, so, so hopefully that transition will be a little bit smoother, you know, so.
Alright, and your week again is?
Uh, June tenth and the eleventh.
Tenth and the eleventh?
Yeah. And I can follow up with Eric, I've, uh, you know, talked, talked a little bit, it's like, you know, like, there's, uh, sometimes he wants to like, that stuff too.
What about, uh, baseballs?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys did a great job, thank you.
So you're gonna wait for a while?
I, I know, but you traveled, you know? Sweet. Well, don't forget to come, bring a kiss, bring a thing, you know? That's my good. Ah, sweet. Thank you guys, thank you.
Alright, that'll, uh, appears enough to start with, uh, so, uh, anyways, is our comprehensive benefit or what? Eric, you wanna?
Yes, so unfortunately, uh, our friend is sick today, so she's not able to attend the meeting, but we have represented, not rocking anyone, we've presented over our audit.
Thank you, good evening. My presentation is not as exciting as that one, I promise. Audit is not that thrilling, uh, but as Erica indicated, we're here this evening to present just a brief overview of the audit process from 2021. And then certainly open it up for any questions that the board members have. I know Brandon's isn't here this evening, but certainly wanted to thank your, uh, Brandon's and the rest of the village team for their efforts in preparing for the 2021 audit. Uh, tonight, I'll provide just a brief overview, I know you've all received the document. Uh, there's quite a bit to digest, I think you're well over two hundred pages now, so, uh, tonight, I'll point out just a couple of key areas within the document. And what we have to kind of review in a little more detail. Certainly, if there are follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out, um, to Erica or Brandon's, certainly get in touch with us as well. Uh, so we'll start on pages fourteen through sixteen, uh, that is the independent auditor's opinion. Uh, really, the reason the village, he is engages our services each year. Uh, what we are required to do is basically assess the overall internal control environment of the village on an annual basis. And secondarily, determine the annual financial statements as presented are in fact, materially correct. So really kind of two goals related to the independent audit. Uh, we're happy to report, we have issued unmodified or clean audit opinion. Uh, so that's really the most important piece of the document. Uh, and we have not issued any significant, uh, findings related to the internal controls or material we missed. So truly the cleanest opinion that the village can receive on an annual basis. Immediately after the opinion, there's going to kind of very important section, uh, that is what we call management's discussion and analysis. Uh, those will be provided on pages eighteen through twenty-nine of the document. Uh, those twelve pages are really intended to serve as the executive summary to the audit. Uh, as I said, twelve or two hundred pages, that's a lot to digest. So those twelve pages at the front of the document, uh, will provide comparable analysis to the prior fiscal year. Uh, discuss major transactions and impacts, uh, to both revenues and expenses throughout the year. Uh, and certainly provide key highlights on areas such as capital access and investment, and long-term debt activity here on the year as well. Uh, so we do encourage our boards to read that kind of executive summary in detail. Uh, staff has prepared that internally and really did an excellent job highlighting some of those key transactions for the year. Uh, the last section I want to point out is really the last part of the document, starting on page one forty-five, taking you all the way through the last page of the report. Uh, that section is what we call our statistical section. I always point it out to our boards, because it really does have a wealth of information within that section of the report. Uh, all kinds of ten-year trend information for the village, uh, starting with financial trends over the last ten fiscal years. As we continue to work our way through that section of the document, we find information on property taxes, long-term debt activity, operating indicators, number of full-time employees. Uh, so again, really a wealth of information that's provided with the back of the report. Uh, I know many of our trustees enjoy spending some time in that section of the document, and certainly a great place to work some of the industry of the village as well. Uh, really intended to keep it short and sweet tonight, again, just to reiterate that clean audit opinion, certainly happy to open it up for any specific questions on the audit documents. But, um, we appreciate you having us on.
So anybody have any questions or comments? Unqualified opinion.
That's what you're looking for, that's right.
Again?
The question I'm looking for. Yes, well, thank you for having us, we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's the item B, if I could have a motion. Oh, we, we, okay, I'm sorry, I should take a moment. I, hey.
Do you just need to, do, do you have to say?
To receive.
To receive? To receive the 2021 annual comprehensive identity report. Okay.
Trusty Molly?
Yes.
Trusty Driver?
Yep.
Trusty Sagnano?
Yep.
Trusty Driver?
Yes.
And Trusty Sager?
Yes.
Okay, now, if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing a First Amendment to the amended and increased development agreement by and between the village, we study, and how, Dell, and LLC, Dell and LLC.
Okay, clear. Okay, discussion.
Uh, Joe or Peter, which I can, come on, listen to.
If you don't mind, actually, most of my comments are gonna be on the following, but they're kind of in a woven together, if that's alright.
Right.
So, uh, for the record, my name is Peter Bezoson, and Jenny Amelgen. With me this evening is Joe Plumbow, uh, the owner of Tero Business Park, and, um, David Pedersen, as well as Jeff Newey. So, we're here to follow up. I, I don't know, I was, I didn't intend to look, but maybe six weeks ago or more, we were here for you. And talked about, um, the amendment to the RDA, the redevelopment agreement. Um, Mr. Plumbow has asked that you, um, dilution the ten million dollar cap, uh, on his TIP reimbursements, and make them, uh, eliminate the cap, so that basically there'd be no cap. Uh, Joe has already spent, uh, close to ten million dollars of TIP reimbursal expenses, and frankly, when he turns in his next mission, he'll be over that. Um, and why is he asking you that? Uh, he's planning to spend, and your, uh, First Amendment talks about it, another thirteen million dollars right off the bat, to build a new forty-seven thousand square foot, uh, truck maintenance and industrial building, uh, up on the north side of this park near the Penny Road, uh, Wendy Road intersection. He's also, uh, promising to build a twelve thousand square foot retail, uh, multi-tenant retail building, uh, closer to seventy-two, uh, just immediately west of, uh, seven-eleven. Um, as part of this industrial building process up to the north, he's, uh, proposing, he's proposing to, um, straighten the intersection, where we would get rid of that, uh, angular intersection between Penny Road and Route sixty-eight that everybody hates, and, uh, line it up with a straight, uh, Rock Road extension, uh, from the very north. Now, he can't take it all the way to where Rock Road ends on the south, but it's, it's gonna be the start of getting rid of that horrible intersection. Um, of course, this is all dependent upon getting IDOT permits, but we're hoping that they'll jump at the chance of, uh, of getting, uh, getting rid of that angular intersection. Um, and as part of this RDA we talked about, and Erica and the staff included, uh, in this amendment before you, then the village would reimburse Joe for up to five hundred thousand dollars of that cost from your surplus from the fifth district of Prairie Lakes, across, I think that's where it's coming from. So, uh, this is, you know, this is truly a given take. Joe is, uh, prepared in that document to donate to the village for ten dollars, three and a half acres of land, up there near, uh, Route sixty-eight, Penny Road, where these two industrial buildings can go. We understand that you have plans to relocate someone from downtown there, but in any event, the land will be yours to do with as you wish. Uh, so essentially, the draft of the First Amendment is okay, uh, but for the mentioning of the IDOT permit, but we can work on that later. Another thing that, uh, Joe has agreed to do in this RDA, you're currently accruing interest on, let's say Joe has eight and a half million dollars of Blue's notes outstanding. Those notes bear interest at six percent.
Forty-eight.
Now they bear six percent.
Yes, but they're walking forward.
Okay, oh, I see what was paid. Uh, the notes have been paid down before, okay, the principal balance, but in any event, whatever the principal balance is, and Joe knows better than I, you're paying six percent interest, you're, you're always, none of this comes out of the village's general fund, it only comes out of TIP. But in any event, there's a six percent accrual of interest. As part of our discussions with, um, staff and the mayor, uh, Joe's agreed that from after the adoption of this amendment, the interest rate would at that point cease being six percent and would become prime minus a half, uh, with a floor of foreign order. Uh, and also on any new bills that he would, uh, submit for TIP eligible expenses that he occurs, incurs after the date of this amendment, uh, and turns into Erica's staff reviews, you approve a note, that would be interest-free, so that it would be non-interest-bearing. Uh, and so, that's all the kind of the given take, but there's one more, uh, request that has always been part of this, which is, uh, he's asking you to approve, uh, a truck parking lot waiver, as you've done in the past. Um, would you please, uh, take a moment and look at this handout that I gave you, uh, that Joe's office prepared? So the top photo shows you what, um, the Tero Business Park looked like in two thousand and eight, right after the candy for the ordinance had, uh, approved, uh, and the TIP was approved back then as well. Um, I was here for that, and it's a card, I believe it was fourteen years ago. Uh, the bottom picture is what the park looks like today, with some of the, uh, most notable tenants noted on the, on the right-hand side. Um, so, uh, and in two thousand and fourteen, really, before, uh, most of this started, maybe one village, one of them started it, you approved a truck parking waiver in two thousand and fourteen, and then you approved another truck parking waiver a couple of years after that. Um, right now, this Tero Business Park has four Plumbow buildings, with a total of about two hundred and thirty thousand square feet. There, there has been, um, thirty million dollars in private investment and eight and a half million dollars of infrastructure has been spent by Joe. Plus, you have an enterprise rental building, you can see on the lower pictured part of the north, uh, of, uh, the first part of this subdivision. And then you have a speedway, which is happily open and is generating, uh, tax revenues for the building. So we have six current buildings as we speak. And what I just went through with you on the TIP amendment is, Mr. Plumbow's gonna be building another industrial building and another retail building. That'll bring us up to eight. Um, this park has grown from two thousand and eight till today, from only a hundred and fifty acres to almost four hundred acres. Uh, through acquisitions, Joe has made, um, property to the northeast. There's been a grand total of fifty-five million dollars of private investment with land acquisition. And the, the, uh, the TIP increment, if, uh, if anybody's know what that is, please let me know, is now spinning off at about a million dollars a year annually of increase over what the base was in two thousand and eight. Um, all that increment, uh, well, the village currently shares that increment with Mr. Plumbow, but when the, uh, when the TIP, uh, districts expire in, uh, two thousand twenty-nine and two thousand thirty-three, all of that will become the village's. Plus, it'll have grown, because that million dollars a year of TIP increment today doesn't include the two buildings that he's going to build. Uh, it doesn't include, uh, national inflation of real estate taxes. Uh, and more likely than not, between now and two thousand thirty-three, he'll be putting up even more buildings than we talked about today, including a, uh, he's kind of like in a truck wash and a, uh, a normal car wash. And as you know, I, cause I think we talked about it the first time we were here, he's looking for a hotel operator for the very truck lot along Higgins Road. There was some thought that, uh, he might do it himself and, uh, on further investigation. You kind of need to know what you're doing with your own. It's like trying to run a restaurant with no experience. So, I, I think it's no exaggeration to say that this, this business park is the park that truck, uh, is a park that truck, uh, parking has built. All this development has been driven by the truck parking. We think that, we think that the hotel developer that ultimately might be found is going to be attracted by the fact that there's so many truckers that are probably in need of staying somewhere overnight, obviously that hotels are for other people. And now you have a village truck parking tax, and so you're benefiting directly from the truck parking as well. The only problem we see right now before you this evening in the truck parking ordinance is section four, which has, as written, at least the last version I saw, said that this waiver, and by the way, let me leave this out for a minute, the waiver that we're asking you to approve, which is what you also approved and why twice before, is that there doesn't need to be a hot asphalt surface, it can be dust-free grimeings, there doesn't need to be curbing, there doesn't need to be whole parking lot lighting. Essentially, this parking is parking as is, and then as buildings get built, whatever the parking was occurring there just goes away. What we're asking, we don't think this, we don't think this makes sense. I think, Erica, is it, is it correct, I don't want to misspeak, was that number of 2025 and section four supposed to be 2052?
It is, and that's the version we're working from.
Okay, so it's a 30-year expiration, the version I have is history, but I understood any corrections, sorry, I didn't see it. But we don't even think 30 years is the right way to go. What's going to happen in 30 years? I mean, are all these buildings that are occupied by truck maintenance people, Cassidy Tire, if a hotel comes, you know, Speedway that's living off of the truck, largely off of the truck fuel that could have disappeared, not to say that they're private investment. Are they supposed, are those buildings just supposed to become empty? This is a little bit like Disney down in Florida telling Walt Disney, yeah, you can build a theme park, but in 30 years, your rides will go away. Well, you know, I don't think, I don't think you want that, I don't think we want that. Neither of our prior truck parking ordinances that you've given us has any kind of a sunset. In 2021, we understand that we approved one for Great Building just east of us, and I told them that doesn't have a sunset. As demand for more buildings occur, Joe will take places where he's been parking trucks and lot of building and parking lot there. So this isn't, just because we're parking on X number of acres today, it isn't, it will always be that way. But imposing a sunset actually will drive our tenants away as the date arises, and your revenue will go down from truck parking, we'll have a bunch of empty buildings. I just kind of encourage you to go back to what we've done before, let the market govern how fast buildings go up, and allow the truck parking, which has actually built this park, to continue. So that's our only request on the, on the waiver ordinance this before you this evening.
I just have one correction, the four, and it was just 4.25.
Is it, whatever was written, we're agreeing, what did we say?
The document had written out as 4.25, but then written the number as 4.5.
I think it is 4.25, I think it's 4.25.
I'm not sure which one it is.
Joe's ready to start moving right away if you.
I have to change again, on the, on the, on the sunset? I'm just curious. Sure, so the truck parking that is, I would say the majority of the operation, has no sunset on it, and this is an additional 80 acres, of which, correct me if I'm wrong, 40 acres currently has a sunset in 2023. Is that right? There's.
Only 23 is sunset, you're right. That's next to me, is, I got a temporary department for. Oh, okay. 60 acres, okay.
Right, so some portion of that right now is newly acquired property, and it is not usable in its current state. So improvements have to be made for it to make it usable. And the thinking behind the sunset is that's, you know, approximately how much time it will take to recruit the cost and invest to make it usable land. But also, you know, it's not to say that in 30 years, the next village board will say, this is great, let's keep it going. They just give us another term to revisit and see if there's any tweaks that need to be made. There's, you know, changing conditions of what we can proceed today. So 30 years is, you know, an option, the board, if they feel that, you know, it should be more or less, or somewhere in between, can adjust it. But that was where we came from, and the portion that we're talking about, the 70 acres, is that 425% of the overall portion relevant?
480, so 20%?
Yeah, 20%. So it's a very small portion of the footprint that will have the restriction on it. The larger portion was given a permanent waiver in previous years.
So the sunset notion isn't going to apply to any structure, you know, which is applied to many parks. So if at the end of that, at the end of that term, or if in between now and that term, the land were to be reused for construction of a building or whatever, that would imply as far as the.
Whatever, whatever is parked, that's right. Whatever, whatever is parking now, wherever it is, Erica's right, this is the 20% on the northeast side of our project. But I guess, you know, and everything Erica, you said is accurate, but the problem is that, you know, we depend upon tenants to come to the park, and tenants are pretty smart. I mean, whether it's enterprise, whether it's Speedway would have known this. They want to know that this is a park that has no definable end to it in terms of its activity. I just, again, I just don't see the, I think what we're doing is we're kind of thumbing our nose at the success that you see on these pictures in front of you. The success has been driven by parking. Joe has demonstrated that he's prepared to build buildings as and when it makes sense. That'll continue. But by putting a sunset clause in there, I mean, obviously tomorrow, is somebody going to go, oh my God, 30 years from now? No. But five years from now, 10 years from now, it's just going to be, I just don't think it's a a big business decision by you and us combined.
I don't think a sunset is meant to say that, you know, 30 years from now, then we would require, you know, the asphalt and lighting and all the amenities that are normally part of our ordinance, but that it would be relooked at. For instance, way back in 2008 or 2007, I was on planning and zoning, and you came before us, and you said you wanted, you had this vision for your planned, planned development. And at that point in time, I think the vision was to have something in this park along the lines that was more like what we see now with Prairie Lakes coming to fruition. And in 2008, I don't recall the conversation of how important parking was. In 2014, when you came and you said you wanted the variances, that's when I think the opportunity was realized that parking could then bring in the businesses and the other buildings and everything else. So to say that, you know, sometime in the future, that a board will not realize that value, and that we're giving you the flexibility to not have to quit any improvements, other than to make more flat land for yourself, that that is something that gives you the flexibility to say, oh, these guys want another building, let's put it right here. That makes sense to us. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I also, I also think 30 years out is a long time out. And to permanently waive something is, does it service also to, to the, to the village?
I totally understand what you're saying, going from the idea of, like the kind of showing that I developed the parking, and I was a guy, I had a truck washed, I had a cattle washed, I had a married, and other maintenance building just like this one on the other side, and I set a parking, my tail, truck dealership. So our entire management here, if I have to come up in the next year or two, with 11 million dollars to put in the, to put in the $7 million car maintenance sort of class.
Right.
And a retail center, which is currently in tons of retail. Now, those projects are all because of trucks. And I got the building there now, and in 30 years, the building facility is still in it. And we're still going to be moving forward, but now I spent 11 million dollars, and I might lose it. That's, that's what I, that's what I get at our, I get attacked with, so I had money, I need to want to keep going here. The gap increase helps a little bit with this, and the whole cost, the gap increase for infrastructure is probably just $2 million, which is a lot, what I mean. Yeah, because you definitely have my bracket, I have points for calculations, and I have goals in fleet. This gap money, what we're getting today, without increase here, I'm not going to do all my money back. That's just what I expect on the streets, anything else that I gave to the village. So that's another risk, and I never get the aim of me for structure. And I'm just thinking this is the greatest thing for the village. We got people come here, people go, this people, don't do dividends, sales sales. I got one of the largest, the extra market truck parks company that just moved in. And I told him what I was doing for the future, that this might happen, and he was all, yeah, I'm going to make sales sales, do as we sales sales. He has to be tired, and I try to get more healthy in my spaces, that both of us. I'm just saying, it's just such a risk to go at this time age, with this ability to come up worth a lot of million dollars in the next two years, I'd have better go and tell you have a lady for 30 million, put in this project. It's just a big risk, and I think the village might as well, you know, if we give up far here.
Yes, sir.
Don't read who's two ordinances, there is no ending. That's why I was able to spend 30 million hours in buildings. I just, yeah, my heart is tired, you know, 40, 11 million, trying to keep this project going full speed, and I hire our architaphs already. Similar to you here, I'm ready to go, I'm playing. That's why I tell you so to be honest, please understand, it's a lot, I mean, it's a lot of risk here. That's not guaranteed, they have an end date, because I won't be here when my great kids come in, I don't know, you know. It's kind of risky.
The village will be here, and I don't think anybody can, you know, deny or question the impact your business has had to Mr. Bezos' point, that with a time limit on parking, it would, I can see where it would put some pressure on trying to develop it or to retain businesses that are going to rely on trucking. There's always going to be a need for trucking, it's never going to go away, we always have, this economy is always moved by truck, and it's always going to, and it's always our trucks who are going to be need to park, we get that. I personally wouldn't have any problem with following, eliminating the date of 2020, 2052, just eliminate. And I also wouldn't have any problem with eliminating the cap, rather than go from 10 to 15, you're going to be back here in another year or so, two, five maybe, asking for another lift on the cap. It doesn't make any sense. Nowhere else in any of the tips that we have here needs to be, we have any developer or parcel that is limited by cap. I really don't understand why it's there. However, I also don't understand the interest. So if in the event we were to go ahead, for my person, from my part, if we were going to go ahead and eliminate the 2052 date, ease up the effort that it's going to require to retain and attract other businesses that are supported by the parking, and the amount of TIP eligible expenses that would be coming in, lift that cap altogether. I would suggest that we, if we were to go ahead and do that, I would like to see in return elimination of the interest on the TIP dollar bill expenses that are vested in.
Did you write it up to me?
I did.
And I totally agree with, with the cap, the notes are here and they.
Right.
That I'm not going to charge.
Because I, I look at this a lot, and I have not found very many instances in other communities where through an agreement with the TIP and the municipality, that there was an interest component to expenses that have been submitted for the TIP.
Have you ever seen that?
No, I'm not suggesting that, I have. What I haven't seen is, it's not a common thing, I haven't seen a lot of instances of it, and nowhere in this there need is it exist. I never understood it to begin with, with the shearing of the TIP at 90%, what's coming in, going back to the developer, the 10% that would normally be coming back to the village for our parts of the expenses associated with the infrastructure that we're responsible for. It doesn't leave a lot of room for us to do that. If we give back 6% on that, then that leaves us nothing. And yet, we still have the responsibility of the infrastructure, the roads, and some of the lines underneath, but that's all on us. And it's going to be 30, 50, 100 years from now, it's always going to be there. We have, we need to share in that, in that TIP money that's coming in. When it was first set up, I didn't understand it, still don't, and the notion of the interest is just completely baffling to me. So as I say, in exchange for, for at least from my position, in exchange for eliminating the 2052 date on the parking, the waivers that you're asking for for the lot that you want to go with, the note 60, we've already done that in the past, I would be okay with that as well. And eliminating the interest on any further expenses that would be submitted, TIP eligible expenses, that to me would be a fair exchange, or certainly one that we would be wanting to have.
I should clarify something, Erica, that we, we already offered, and it's in the document, that for any note that he submits a month or two months from now, the interest would be zero.
Right.
Are you talking about the accrual of interest on the existing note, stopping and going to zero from this point forward? That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, so what we're, we're talking about going, taking back from 10 to 15, and coming to 10 to 15, no interest at all, we understand that.
Yes.
We're talking about the four that you've yet to submit. You've already gotten $4 million worth of TIP eligible expenses and 6% paid on that. What I'm talking about.
6%.
Right, 6%. What I'm talking about is the second four, that is for the amount that has yet to be submitted from that point on, you know, so the elimination of the interest altogether is what I would, I would be entertaining.
The second four was eight, let's say, do it this way, it was eight, you've paid him back four on these existing notes that, you know, I got them in my pocket. You paid him down before, they're bearing interest at 6%. You'd like that, instead of going to four in quarters, and you'd like it to go to 0%. And then new notes would be at 0%. You're wanting all notes going forward to accrue 0% interest.
Right. So I would say, you know, from any, any, Erica, tell me.
I'll agree to that, we'll agree to that. You brought up your four, and it's the reason I brought the six down to four and a half before.
Simply because what we, where the village ends up with is 10% on the increment that comes in off the TIP. That's not a lot of room for us to be able to put aside monies for the rainy day we know is coming.
Right.
And to be honest with you, Joe, none of the other tips that we have, nobody has gotten anywhere close to that. The highest item of call is 50. So with 90, it leaves us nowhere to go. So we're going to be dipping into the general fund to be able to maintain our end of responsibility for any maintenance on the infrastructure and the Turo Business Park.
But they kind of, we increased properties, yes, by a million dollars, this is nine years.
Right, and then to Mr. Bezos' point on that, in another nine years, 10 years when the TIP expires, the million dollars that's coming in off, it isn't going to be coming to the village. Majority of it's going to be going to the school board, then park district, then the library, and then the township, and then everybody else. The very bottom of the list is the village at 1.7%. So we're not going to.
So we're in agreement with that, and then there'd be no cap, and then there's no interest going forward. No interest going forward, no cap.
And then I, and then to return, the elimination of the date, elimination of the running of the waiver, the initial margin that you want to do, and will the boards form? And that's going to be my next kind of question.
You know, I'm having a hard time with, like, having a negotiation in public. And I also think there's a lot of letters, and that I think that we need to, there's a lot of factors and a lot of letters here that we need to. there's a lot of factors and a lot of letters here that we need to kind of consider. I understand that. A lot of people here have some interesting ideas to bring to the table, but I don't think this is the right.
So if in the ability, well, in, in the, in the interest of trying to pass then or deny these motions, if there's further negotiation, that needs to take place and it probably, we probably, we probably need to be in a consecutive session, we would ask to pay these motions now, so we understand times and the absence and stuff. So if we were tabled this for the next meeting, is that going to call your problem?
It's, it's just going to push everything back on the.
Yeah, two weeks, uh, in fact, yeah, yeah.
Four months, right?
No, I, I, I realize and I appreciate that, but.
Well, this process has been, we've gone through eight or nine drafts, Erica and, uh, your very good legal counsel back and forth, and at some point we get, you know, to the point where staff says, well, this, you know, maybe how we see it, we don't have to ask the board, and that's what we're doing tonight. I know it's hard to negotiate in public. We really are only talking about, I mean, the interest rate, your able-bodied mayor has just driven the interest rate down to zero. And, and we would like, we would like, you know, uh, we've always been a no cap. I mean, we've always been asking no cap. That's not new. That's in your draft. So the only thing is the interest gone to zero and there's no sunset, which is like eighty percent of the rest of the property. So, but if you don't feel you can recommend it tonight.
Well, it looks like based on what's in our cap yet, we could take the motion that is actually on the table right now, because that's where the elimination of the cap is. It's the second motion that actually deals with the, uh, date. There are two motions on the table. They, they.
I would, I would ask them to, just to clarify for the rest of the board and anybody else, um, either Erica or, or Lance, if you can help me understand better, what benefit or, um, you know, what drawback, I, I don't know what drawback is. I need to know what the benefit is of having a cap at the beginning. I don't understand it.
Then I don't know. So, what do we have? I don't, I don't know. So it, it appears to me that the cap was intended to place a limit on the amount of recovering tip eligible expenses, because as these expenses are coming in, you're just saying, well, any eligible expenses, we will reimburse you. And that's, that's not typical. Usually when these RDAs are negotiated in tip developments, there's, the, the developer needs to show a market need or a gap. And they're usually required, the pro forma is usually down to show what kind of profit is going to be gleaned from the development. And this is, this, this appears to be a different way of coming at that kind of limitation. But I don't know. I was here. I don't, I don't know back and forth. I don't know how it got to, but it is.
But, but tip, the cap on the tip doesn't necessarily control the type of expenses that are going to be coming in. Tip lag covers that. So whether or not it's.
No, that's not what I mean. They always have to. But every tip eligible expense is, is said, we will pay. So that's not typical. Uh, why? Because usually you have, instead of a cap on a dollar amount, you have a pro forma or a development and you know exactly what's going in, what everything, the estimated costs are, and what the ultimate profit that the investors are expected to get. And, and that's how that maximum number is, and that wasn't done here properly because the plan was so enormous.
Well, there was that, but also.
So the cap to me, this is just my, my feel of what, where it came from. There, the thought was there had to be some kind of, right? So it just, that's why I was.
And not only a pro forma statement would be required for any development that goes in, but the size of this one, to Joe's, their defense, um, when the tip was first put in place with this, man, we had a major recession. And it sat for a good number of years before anything got.
Well, I'm not saying there's no progress.
No, obviously, that's not typical. So if that, I think a cap on such an enormous development would have been difficult to do, because I think this one just kind of morphed as went along. As time went on, the needs changed, and so you take advantage of the business opportunities that are presented to you and you just take.
And to trustee Molly's point, when she was on the time commission in two thousand eight, Joe had every intention of just having buildings pop up like Prairie Lakes, right? And then it sat and nothing happened, a recession, and finally he was able to get some people saying, hey, can I park there? And nothing. Can I park there? And all of a sudden, he realized that if he could use some parking there, which you approved in two thousand fourteen, I'll start springing the buildings. But anyway, you want to say something?
Yeah, just, you know, the, 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 the. Then when you first got that cap, we were at seventy-five acres. Now we have twice that, like, fifty acres. That's why I'm trying to develop.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to criticize the village. So basically, explain here, there had to be some kind of a, a maximum, right?
I get it. I get it. There's, uh, there's two other variables that I want to throw in the mix. Like, one is that I'd like to understand better before voting is the ninety-ten split. Uh, it sounds like that's, in other deals, sometimes it's eighty-twenty or seventy-thirty, like it's ninety-ten, something that, um, could be considered so that there's more money from the tip that goes to, uh, developing things in the area from the village's costs. Um, the interest going to zero sounds good. I could see the thirty years being, um, waived or removed. Um, the other concern, I think the reason that I thought that a thirty-year cap would be good is to bring up concerns of things we didn't think of, but maybe better to just address ones that we are thinking of now and then remove that so we can invest in it. But a couple of the concerns that were picked around is the security and, um, like having gated areas that are secure, where if you're doing long-term parking, uh, people can't be wandering in and out and that there aren't people, uh, stealing or there, there aren't issues like that. People idling and just staying there instead of leaving after they check their truck in. They could just leave there a couple nights and then we've got kind of like an RV park unofficially. Um, so if there were some security things that we could put in of saying that there should be a gated area and a full-time security person there and some sort of check-in, check-out thing, so that when you check your truck in, you, on your way out, scan and that you're checked out. And if you don't, then somebody goes and tells you, you should leave, you can't just stay there. Uh, so I think those were the, um, concerns that we were kicking around. Just hearing from law enforcement that they felt like there were a lot of calls of disputes of people breaking in or stealing things out of people's trucks or disputes over whose parking spot it was. So I think if we felt like those concerns were fixed, and I think they could be somewhat easily fixed with just access control and a full-time security guard or a place you can call if there is an issue that isn't, the, you send the police department, you could call the security desk. There's always someone there.
Yeah, I want to say out today, we are doing some long-term areas and that is then, we keep. And, uh, probably, uh, case for everything is there's some way to get out of there. And it's really difficult. But I have a suggestion to, just to make today. We've been through this, we've got this on tape. So if we have thirty years time, we can say that we'll drop the interest rate, um, you know, moving forward. Instead of doing that, just prove it the way it is today. And then we could put a word of another motion, if you want to discuss it some more, if you think. Then we're, we're at forty-five percent interest going forward, works for you. At that time, they will pay off.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that the motions, if they stand, or, you know, if you pack it, we can go ahead and prove now you're okay with that, and then any adjustments or amendments that we would want to make to that that have been brought up tonight, bring that at a later date.
Do you have any other thoughts, any reasons for this? I mean, it's not ideal, but it's, I do understand the need to desire to do this. So this would give me the opportunity to do that. So is there, besides just doing it? Besides the pain of breathing more.
Well, you're saying whatever you approve tonight, if you choose to approve something tonight, you can't walk back. So you can't change your mind down the road and say, instead of ninety-ten, I want seventy-thirty. That's done. But there's tweaks that have been made that would be, they, what, what you have from me is a very complex agreement. And it's a very, there's long-term ramifications and there's a lot to consider. So I would say if you are comfortable with majority of it, you can tweak, you know, small things. Uh, but if you're not comfortable with the majority of it, then I would say we, we can take it.
Well, if you're, the, 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 the interest, the revenue year isn't just a small thing to tweak, you know.
So, so I would, what I heard Joe say though is, you, Sam is drafted with a thirty-year limitation, and we've got an interest reduction, uh, zero going forward, but we haven't gone as far as the mayor has suggested we should go into zero. But what Joe's suggesting, right, is approve it as is, thirty years, our, your thirty years in our interest. And there's an incentive for the village to follow up because you want to cut that interest to zero. And there's an incentive for us to follow up with you because we'd like the thirty years to go to the moon. So we, I think we appreciate it if you would ask us before you tonight and let's keep talking.
Can you do that ninety-ten?
Uh, I don't think that.
That was a possible, you know. So the, the, the issue with the ninety-ten, keep in mind that the ninety-ten gets the developer more money faster. And if you give up the interest and then you don't get the money as fast, it makes it less interest. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we lose the cost there, that's why, you know, that needs to be considered. Um, you know, but in this instance, uh, development really is a question mark because it's, it's basically implied. So.
I guess what I thought I should do is because you have two different functions and you have four ministers, we could eliminate cap, right? The, of one, and then the interest in the thirty years is on the second motion. So we could motion for a cap or a goal. And do that tonight and then hold, uh, holding this.
These are really kind of tied together.
I think they are tied. I just, because they're too separate.
I would, I would recommend. They are tied together.
I'm just speaking, first of all, I am fine with what was discussed and giving them what you want. And we get the zero percent. Like, I would be fine with going on that one forward right now. And I know he is too.
Okay, so.
We're, we're circling the frame of some of those ideals, so.
Lance, can I ask you though that if what was, what's being proposed tonight on the agenda for reduction in the interest rate down to four point two five gets agreed to, can it afterwards be adjusted down to zero or are we locked in on that? Because we asked it right now.
No, so, so what I would, you've always, I meant the agreement. And I think what counsel was saying is that there's a, there's a logical trade-off. Like, you can look at it as everything would remain in place, but in return for removing the twenty fifty-two year, they would be willing to adjust the language of the interest. And that would essentially be the, the, well, there's consideration, that's a legally binding amendment. If that's the only thing we're talking about, that could catch up later. Uh, if, if the majority of the board is inclined to go with what President Lina, is out mine and a couple of you have advocated, we have a problem with. I would not recommend trying to tweak the language precisely tonight, but rather establish consensus and then staff can come back and make sure that it's in proper form for next time. We can go on consent, because you've already, you know, promised it all for me, but.
But it would be a subsequent motion that would have to be addressed.
It could be put on consent and they would know it's going that way. And just, because you want to look at how this percentage is rooted. You, I, I try sometimes to adjust ordinances on the fly, but we would want to make sure the language is correct. But essentially, you know, unless the board change because of some catastrophe, I mean, you could be committing principle to that concept. Or you could pass the ordinances as we are, familiar with them, as I said, come back. If it was just a tweak about the trade-off between the deadline, the sunset and the interest, that's fairly straightforward, that the, the ordinances that were passed would be enough.
That's how we'd like to do it. We'd like to start over and smell and, and the forecast would just sometimes order me to route.
Right.
But it's up to you. It's not our decision.
I know, I get it. Um, so do you see any problems with going ahead and proving what's been presented tonight? Tweaking again later on, you know, the, the next meeting or rest meeting after that? I mean, in the interest of time, I understand the other projects.
I would be, I would be happy to literally do this. I would be happy to set a special, special board meeting next week. If we can work things out.
To know.
But it's too complicated and I just, I'd rather have it really clean and as a bundle and, and tied up. Because the, the initial concept that we talked about in theory six weeks ago was a lot broader than this and there's, you know, a lot more detail that's come to light that, um, is wonderful and really are happy with the type of investment that you want to put into place. But I also want to make sure that we're putting things together and written up properly, um, in the best interest of the village.
Joe, can you give us a week?
They, they occurred to me, you know, starting this September.
I, I know and I appreciate that, but given, given the complexity and the changes that are being presented to what we've gotten, I think the board is more comfortable making sure that everything is on the eyes of that in the TSO draft. Now, we, you can give us a week if you have it down.
Well, I mean, I, 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 no, I mean, if I'm, if I'm, you know.
I mean, I do understand it, but then that links the suggestion of moving it forward and then putting it on some agenda. So that when we're moving in the right direction, we need to rework the language. We know it needs to be reworked, so. We don't, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So before we finish up, before we do that, I just want to understand if any, any of these concerns are going to be addressed. And if they, if we want to address those concerns, I'm going to need more than.
We need more than, yeah, we got a possession point on that.
And it's supposed to go, we don't have a special meeting Monday, that gets put on Thursday, so we.
Right, don't understand.
So that's like, we move into the information with the other next four.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Is that, oh, you guys, oh, I see.
So it's not consent agenda for a special meeting next week. It's consent agenda two weeks. But it's essentially in good faith. We are, this is, we're bringing on it, but we have to just formalize language and get that right on board.
Okay.
Okay, so the consent. Consenting to say yes with these stipulations to bring back, is that what the consent is? As opposed to just saying no or, because, yeah, I don't understand how it's a yes, but not.
So the fundamental, the fundamental thing is that if a clear majority of or affirmative votes are in favor of these items as they are presented with the change, the trade-off in the elimination of the empty and sunset provision and the language involving the interest to make clear that no further requests for reimbursement, uh, will be subject to interest. That was true, although only you'll have received the interest since you're seeing the date. There will be no interest going forward, either on any new notes or on any past notes where they haven't got any requests. If that's where we are, if that's where the majority of the four months ago, I think the best thing to do is to get that consensus out there and staff to correct those changes to be made and put it on the, the next meeting agenda, which would be in two weeks. And I just said that if those changes, if everyone is okay with that, they legally, you might just develop, could go on, you could go on consent, which I have to, be placed on the agenda as for the business or as a new agenda, we'll discuss it again. Uh, but, but everyone would have to be, or the majority would have to be okay with the agreement, which these don't address, because we saw the specific concerns. So, but he's only one person, so you can picture out where you want to go.
So if I did a consent agenda about those two points, it would, we wouldn't be able to come back and say, so ninety-ten, it could be eighty-twenty or whatever else. Okay, I could do that tonight. And then the eighty-twenty or, uh, seventy-thirty, is that, out of all the tip money that goes into a file, um, the ninety percent goes to the developer currently and ten percent goes to village costs or village spending? Uh, is that typical? Is that typical? What I'm told is that that's a lot higher than other TIP deals. So if we're extending and making it unlimited, is there any adjustment? That's the only thing, I just wanted to review other towns and other deals and see if it's equitable for the village as well.
Well, it's such extraordinary because this was a little grant. It was a really depressed, depressed part. So is the question.
So Joe, actually, to, to Andy's point, I might suggest, for, for the Terra Business Park, there's actually two of the tips that are in play. One compromise may be to leave the 90/10 split in place for the Christina Drive development, but for the Dundee Crossings, take it down to the 70/30.
Okay, well, two things. So why, there would be anything at all if we into this development, there would be 10% right or the other to split.
No, I don't.
Number two, as I showed Erica, and I've worked on it, against these states here, I've never been able to pay back 90% as it is. If we improve all this, 11 million to have this, uh, two, three million of the infrastructure work, probably never even get it laid back in the 90/10.
Well, and, and that could be the case. Anything that you would recover through the TIP is, is better than nothing. If we're talking, what, what you're suggesting though is just the cost of doing business. So if there wasn't any TIP involved at all and TIPs didn't even exist, your situation, they described, would still be the same. If you want to invest in it, you do, and whatever comes back to you in the way of profit is why you're doing it. It, what I'm saying is that, that because of the, the life left on the TIP and you're not likely to regain everything back, the TIP really isn't meant to guarantee that you do. The TIP really is only a place to be a vehicle or an incentive to try and spur on further development and to apply an area, bring about that development. So, but the reason why we have a piece of it is because we're on the hook for some of the maintenance that goes on no matter where anything is developed. If it's in a TIP district, we retain part of that money, one, to attract further developers to come in, and two, to maintain what is responsibility of the village. When it comes to 90/10 split with what's on Christina TIP, it leaves us very, very little. So what I'm suggesting though is that since you are the only developer in Christina TIP, that I can see leaving in place, the 90/10 split. But then whatever is developed on your land that is technically part of the Dundee Crossings TIP, we can take that and talk about that going down to the 70/30 split. Because nobody else in the Dundee Crossings gets that deal. And I can't really say that it's fair. So Dundee Crossings TIP extends beyond the Terra Business Park. So how do I tell somebody in the side end of the Dundee Crossings TIP that I'm only going to give you 30% of the development that you brought about, but I'm going to give Joe Plumbel 90? I, I have a real tough time with that. I had a really tough time with that when it was first put together. That was my argument. It was pushed aside as non, as a non, you know, irrelevant.
I know, you're right, it was relevant. I got distressed in my heart, there was a little grapple, there were holes there.
Right, no, I get it, that's what I've heard of. Right, but the TIP is a 23-year deal. And what I'm saying is that now you've gone ahead and you've spurred out a lot of the development in that. If, if everything in the Terra Business Park was, was restricted to one TIP, I wouldn't have a problem with this. Because you're the only developer and it makes sense that the line shares and funds go back to you because it's your investment. But there's a shared investment, there's, there are shared developers who are part of the Dundee Crossings TIP that are not getting a 90% cut of any development that they're very involved in. So my struggle is to try and explain that to them. So what I'm suggesting is that for the time that's been on the TIP to date, leave it in place. And then we, we could adjust the Dundee Crossings portion of the 70/30 split and leave for the Christina Drive TIP at 90/10, because that's still all one.
Let me just explain something here. I'm trying to develop for the village. I'm trying to reveal to, I'm understanding, $1 million dollars again, three million infrastructure. Do you end up with a, um, I did two scenarios. One, if I don't build anything anymore, how is TIP going to pay out? And 6% of the $10 million, okay? And I did another home with these, two more buildings. If I don't build any more buildings, how many moves? I have 92 million. If I build these three buildings, now I take the risk of not getting paid back $3 million. So that's why I'm hesitant. And I'm trying to develop. The mortgage out is great for you, it's great for me.
Absolutely, no need to question that.
And now we're talking about, I mean, I, trustee Sauter, I mean, that, that discussion has always had 70/30, 80/20, whatever, at the beginning. We have an agreement in place, we've been working on this since February to try and amend it. And I, I'm speculating, we're going to be talking about this for months to come if we try and do these percentages. I just, I don't know, I understand, I understand.
I do feel like we're back to negotiating a contract. So we need to, in the conversation, and the board needs to.
Right, and we don't need to come to an understanding or agreement, whether on, on what I've just suggested. It's just a delivery of lay-around. So, so it's a possibility, I mean, it's just kind of like compromise offer, or what we can do, or what we can build. So, okay, in the interest of time tonight, if we, we can go ahead and if the board is comfortable voting on these two motions as they currently exist in the packet, we can go ahead and do that with the notion that we are going to bring to the board a subsequent motion that will tweak the, the aspects of it, that being the interest rate and the, the sunset date, and then Paul and Weaver's going to be there anyway, so that's not a late deal. But those two items, as far as anything, as far as the, you know, renegotiating or whatever percentage is up that the, the TIP agreement is based on, that's another conversation that we're probably going beyond another two weeks, so.
I disagree, we need to take over this. So we can get all of the details worked out. And if it's done right, if it's done at first step, there's no regrets, there's no issues. I think there's going to be some conversations going on back and forth with the view and Erica and Mr. Yelena, Mr. Plumbel. Because there's also still the, the security that we need to talk about and some of the parking laws, so that.
Right, and that's, that's something that, in this point, that could be brought up at another meeting.
Right, yeah, I want to wrap off that.
Well, okay, but.
It's possible.
Yeah, and it is possible. But what we're talking about doing now is taking what we, what we brought before the board tonight, and it's now morphing into a larger discussion to add, to have items that we're part of it again with. So it's, what I'm saying, Kathleen, is that we can go ahead and address those points that you aren't, aren't comfortable with at the next meeting. And still get this part done and let Joe get going on what he wants to do. Because I, I do understand and I appreciate the, the need of time on a lot of this material that needs to be ordered in two weeks.
I guess, I guess the question is, what does Joe need to be able to get started on that? But, and I, Joe, what do you need from all of this?
If we just approve what we, what Erica's been working on for two months, you get, then I could turn the architect moves, the steel people, pre-cast people to get working. I mean, you're sitting at home right now.
Now, it hurts that a lot of the conversations tonight, including any of these concerns about security and other points that have been brought up, are, you know, this, these, these contract points don't really deal with anything around that. I don't necessarily know if they should, because these are TIP financial discussions, right? Like, that's what is really in here, the things like, you know, security, finance. Like, all that good stuff, like.
The reason that it seems relevant is that this is asking for a change in rules on a property for parking that aren't the norm, and that might bring about other concerns that would be nice to approve it and keep it going, but say, have a couple regulations of just, since we're going into the unregulated area of, people could be just living in their trucks, thousands of truckers living in their trucks, if we don't have some sort of rules saying, we need to, some sort of guarantees that people are not living in their trucks and that there is some sort of full-time security and a check-in, check-out process, and maybe that aren't exist. But those are just concerns that if we're changing from regulating a space to not regulating it, it seems like there might be a couple of concerns that we do want to throw in.
But, but you know, so we can deal with those issues in the two or four weeks when we come back on the interest rate and the sunset, because we don't like the sunset and you don't like the interest rate. And we could also deal with security issues, we're both motivated. But I guess, you know, and I certainly won't go into it again, but with you doing what, what these current motions agreements do for us, we're also giving back two buildings right away and moving a detention pond, make the land buildable, and et cetera, et cetera. So right now, there's already a lot of give and take, and I guess, I don't know, it just depends. And if you insist on having it all in one package, it's going to be just a big delay. We'd like to come back and talk about the sunset and the interest and security. Security, some of these truckers need to come in the middle of the night and get their rigs out, so we could explain all that. But try and work something out as a middle ground.
Well, and if those items are able to be addressed at a later date, nothing that's being proposed tonight would necessarily have to. So from my position, your points are well taken, as well as the idea of the sunset date and the interest. So if we can address those at a subsequent meeting, we should.
To answer your question, we went from one security guard to two double decides of our security. And the last one, I said, I should.
So the two B's still there there 24/7?
Yes, sir. It's a seven days, two cars with three years.
I just wanted to interrupt just for a second. I want to make sure that any concerns that are brought up are addressed adequately and thoroughly. And at this point, I think we've gotten some feedback, but at this point, I wouldn't recommend that you, or anything like that, you should essentially table it for two weeks. But I understand there's a little bit to be delayed, we've been working on this since February, but I, I would really feel strongly that the board does this right and that you guys feel that's to be comfortable with what we're putting forward. So that would be my recommendation.
So if there's a division on the board, what would you be this evening? Whether to pass something tonight or to wait? What I would suggest, the way to bring that into the force for those of you that feel like you should wait, follow Erica's advice, make sure the documents are correct, understanding what Mr. Plumbel is carrying, etc. Would be a motion to table it till the next meeting and then for the refined documents. And then if that motion passes, it's tabled. And if it doesn't pass, you know, or if there's a motion on, on the table now, so that I can draw. It's only on. If there's, if there's a consensus, then it's on.
Okay, well, then that leads us with the question of getting consensus, whether or not to table what's been presented tonight for the next two weeks, for the next meeting, so. Amy?
Yeah, I'm in favor of table it, is Erica or you?
Right, so, so if you make a motion to table, and then we take precedent, even though there is a pending motion. So does that motion to table it or not to be?
Yeah, some motion to table is, is gendalic.
Or do we have consensus?
PNC.
PNC, yes.
Well, okay. Do we need to just go around and find out if we have consensus before a motion is offered?
No, we can, but there was a motion in a second, you know, take the vote and then.
Oh, got it. Right, pay motion and then a second, then I'm putting it on to table it.
So table it to the basics, can you? Kathleen?
Trustee Mahoney? Yes. Trustee Britton? Yes. Trustee Samia?
No.
Trustee Trevor?
Nope.
Trustee Saar?
Yes.
And the president, right?
No, but it won't matter.
We split them. No, questions for the board?
What?
So the options are not those?
Well, you're still waiting, you're all here, right?
No, no, that would be.
Oh.
So they also know it would be a motion to adopt. And, and you could do PNC together because they are together.
So C has not been read in the motion, so we have that in ready commotion made?
Yeah, they have to be made on.
Yeah, just, just make you the motion to adopt.
We could have a motion for, just PNC?
Like to make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the Amendment and restated Development Agreement by, by and between the Village East End D, Illinois, and Palenque LLC. And.
And to approve an ordinance.
And to approve an ordinance waiving certain building development regulations with respect to the Palenque LLC. Palenque to LLC.
Kathleen?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Samia?
Yes.
Trustee Trevor?
Yep.
And Trustee Saar?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
We'll be available too.
Appreciate your patience, but we'll be touched in on further amendments.
Excellent.
Eric, thank you, Kathleen, you ready to vote?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then I think so, I have E, no, I'm sorry, I have E.
Thank you.
This is a discussion point, but this one here, are we going to be motioning?
It's, it's discussion direction.
Okay, yeah, because we're going to be changing, I think, right?
So, yes, there's a motion on the table, discussion direction.
Okay. So the discussion in direction of outdoor dining regulations for restaurants in the downtown area for 2022 summer season. Erica, would you like to run us through this one right here?
Sure, so as part of COVID-19 protocols, restaurants in the village were allowed to utilize outdoor dining spaces in the public driveway. Some, some of those directives have since expired that were allowed for that. So we need direction, but in the little board, and if there's any interest in continuing that for the one final season or if we should go back to the way things were before, where you have to have your outdoor dining on your property or on, you know, like a sidewalk cafe and not in the actual street. We want a business that is currently interested in utilizing the street for a cafe or extension of the serving area, and then an additional business is also potentially interested. So if we want to amend the rules or back with ordinance or permission to allow it, but if the board feels that we're too huge outside of the, we know of that being a necessary thing, then we can cease the practice. So just working through that and whether the board wants to be in this video or situation.
Yeah, would you like to grab?
Yes, sure.
PNC.
For.
Oh, wait, everybody. I was a little shorter and sweeter than I was. I just can't answer that, I want to run. Uh, we've been the owners, Coopers of Chitam, that side of this, and I want to start because of the COVID there.
See, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we talked about, you know, obviously in 2021, when the announcement of news came out saying that they were allowed outdoor dining. And it was very, you know, wasn't very, I don't know, it wasn't very like, uh, official conversation when we kind of talked about the vulnerability of what we can do to be the only restaurant in Easton Gate without, without receiving in that particular time. And they came up to use the, the parking, and it was loved, and it's again, with all the new, it's using parking again. And we still feel like it is still, you know, concern for people that, you know, COVID has not gone away. It's still there, and sort of the barriers coming up. So that outdoor dining is, is really important to us to conceive of a business someone we cover from the horrible 2020 year that we had, wherever we were, you know, just two weeks ago. from the horrible 2020 year that we had, wherever we were, you know, just a minute ago, so. And they people off. And took quite a bit of a hit from our, like, in public, their baking. And that's why we kind of were able to kind of look at it, too, we looked at what we had originally put out there, which was, you know, pretty bare bones, city blocks and tacos, where Eric sometimes jumped out and built something quite nicer, but also attracted more attention to drive by, people that's by, was super nice, flower plants and whatnot. After talking with our neighbor, we also understand that they're neat to have parties or, you know, kind of thought about the possibility of how we can make it a little bit smaller, but still have some outdoor parking. As you can see, in front of our restaurant, majority of our, actually, or half of the parking is right in front of our establishment, is handicap, that's handicap parking for not just our establishment, the school next door, that office, standing there, it's the only handicap parking in the area. So, you know, you take the one that's parking, cannot be able to be used for our, you know, joint business, we need to share that. So we're looking to possibly get going forth, and it's not something fun to use for the season if you ever get splintered, but we have people out there and in a nicer kind of look than just maybe on the street, if that makes sense.
The idea of what we've built so far, what we have is, you know, flower plants, lights in the street across, you know, without, there aren't any lights in trees outside of the other, and that's just going really nice. And all our neighbors have already expressed interest in sitting on Saturday and are excited about it. We've already bought the lumber, the scene, we know we can do it again this summer. So we've already invested in really, in all the things that we have to build, so I had to take it all down and try to turn it this way, try to turn it this way. We're hoping we can get at least the summer out of it.
So this is, this is already built. It may be taken down, but it's all.
Right, yeah, yeah, we built it, yes.
Right, no, it's been improved from what it was.
You know, yeah, because it's not on, you know, the flowers and lights.
I'm sure total number of parking places.
Yeah.
The total number is just right in front of the two buildings, right there. Well, you got two handicapped vans, and we have nine spots right there, so it becomes a little island and then goes closing part of the gravel.
So that just took up six, that's your six classes, right? But that has.
And partitions take up six.
Six.
Six of the nine.
So in the past years, we tried to build up those stops, be able to like walk up to his office and whatnot, and for sure, the school's in there, for sure. And then, you know, we tried it out, so this new design to kind of keep some sort of going to. But, you know, we did have a conversation, we didn't understand, you know, this is a parking too. So we're more likely to like, should we do that with the full spots we have out there? We'd like to try to figure it out before we have to take everything out.
I'd love to see some kind of compromise. I mean, I don't, I'm not against the idea of having outdoors, but I would like to see a little bit of compromise there, though. I just, you know, as it's been raised, you have to, so that's where I'm kind of about. The other, the other, I mean, I know that the bigger issue here is do we continue to allow COVID guidelines kind of to move forward? We all know we have a parking pad down there. We do have that lot. The gravel lot is typically for Bambino, Versary and Ambo. It's signed, there's signage that indicates that it is available for all three.
What, for a lot of, for a lot of?
They make all the hotels.
Yeah, one ten love letter?
Yeah.
No?
No. There's signage on that, I don't know. It says Versary, Bambino, so we try.
We would have also, if you're happy, we would have signatures, we have people wearing tuxes, Eric, please.
Okay, so the signage is invalid at this point?
I would have, I would have to add, I think I have something, I think that was something. Also, we would also like to deal with the gravel lot that Ryder has.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I was trying to, I was trying to come up with a solution to the parking issue that you guys are going to encounter as a, as a thing, and I was walking by that lot, and I was like, oh, there's a sign on it.
It's a little. And in respect to our neighbor, we'd be willing to shorten it, make a last release, do something. You know, we are closed, we are closed Mondays, we are closed for lunch Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because of COVID, we just couldn't pull it, stay at home those days. So we have to say, I'm going to do that, I'll be doing that, you know, before class those days. So that would help us.
Is it more mobile, is your setup something that could be permanent for?
For the summer.
For the summer?
Just for the summer.
They, when they cleared out, they leveled it out, so that, you know, it moved. It's very, it's very near. It was another issue they had with the previous setup we had, where, you know, we were signaling and we worked with us.
I was always wondering if this is a problem, and then they noticed that.
Say, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Do your office hours go beyond four o'clock?
So for me, listen, the biggest issue is we have people that come in that can't walk as much. So considering if all, I only have two spots in front, or three spots in front, and there's no closest handicap spot, and it's further away, it's hard for them to come in. The other thing is, it's not me I consider, there is a business next to me, the jujitsu place, they also have a lot of people coming in. But the bigger question for you guys is, hey, if you extend this, then what's it to stop other restaurants? Like, condo is happening, but there is other places that can say, listen, we can do this. So my whole is, I love the fact that you can do, if you can shorten it, I'd be more than happy and make sure you guys succeed. But you guys have to look at the bigger picture as well. So if you give me more spots, I'm more than happy. Because my patients come in the other times, I'm not, parking isn't, that means it's not a huge issue because I work during the day. It becomes an issue for anybody that's, for the rest of people.
Right. I would like to say, Chuck over here, Ben, who helped us build this, and I know we can maybe get creative and try to fix it so that, I don't know, we can move things. I don't know, if I could tell which place needs a closer maybe, but it could be options, or I don't know, we might do tables, do some more with an arm, what we want to do, whatever, we may just try to have it for the summer. So we've already put the money out. You know, I know our future plans is something that we've talked about, we want to go rooftop on our building, it's just that, we're looking at money, how long enough to put in your business here to do it because of COVID and, you know, supplies weren't available, so putting in an active duty, but then it's, I want it to be future. We're just trying to recruit somebody in the summer, and, you know, trying to make with that. And also, especially to, if we're looking at this, we want to make sure we're all parking.
What about the idea of if, if we do decide to do something, each business has to ask to have that, that word, where it's not just like a blink in a thing, it's will consider each one that we come. And I like the idea of there is a compromise, making sure, like, I.
Is this something that might fall into the special use permit? We want to allow this under current COVID restrictions that we had on books that are no longer valid or whatever could be questioned. So as to not have to deal with everyone doing the same thing, could our request be put in for special use permit to a lot of this?
Well, not a special use permit, but a license, a license to use, because the parking spaces are incredibly correct. Yes, actually, the village property, which has the authority to lifetime issue temporary license to use it, so.
Definitely, I think it's a good idea, what Tricia said, to take each one of these vacay spaces and evaluate it. I would like to, okay, I was, I was, Chris, if there's a possibility that we can relocate those two handicap spaces and make them converted at the place, and allow that space to be utilized for the outdoor eating areas, so that it, it's a little bit more contained. Yeah. Would that be a possibility?
Yeah, like moving one down.
We would have to take, we need to make sure the natural connection is for handicap stalls.
So the idea of taking one of the handicapped spots and moving it to the car, more than out of this script so in front of Main Street Temple, technically would be possible?
So. So if there's, it seems like there's general consensus that we want to try to make a combination here. I could work with the village engineer to figure out what might be the most appropriate using space and figure out a solution that works for everybody, if there's a compromise to have.
And then the idea of licensing, if necessary, rather than just there to be aligned with COVID policy or fall under it, because again, to that side point, if, if every one of the restaurants in the downtown area decided to go with this, you know, we'd be in big trouble. Like, we're in big trouble, it is.
Well, yeah, and a lot of this, I mean, this, originally, this whole thing was put in place and allowed to help the businesses succeed during.
Yeah.
A crazy time where there was no indoor service allowed, it was only outdoor service. And I still want to see you guys succeed and, and, and do the, as best as you can, but the conditions are different than the last two, two years now that, that the indoor dining has gone to the, to the, to the else, so.
And I would like a compromise.
Yeah.
Pretty open.
So, yeah, well, I guess what we're going to do is going to, we're going to work with Joe, see if we can get some parking situations changed out. And if necessary, you are amenable to the idea of perhaps taking this down for spaces from six. If, I mean, if there was some of that, you could adjust what's meeting lines.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
All right.
So then from here, we just wait for?
Well, that was going to be my question there.
Sorry.
Time, if this, you know, we're going to have to really kind of get on our horse on this one right away, because whether, you're going to need to know what you can, know what you can't.
Okay.
You know, so. Okay, we'll get it to you now. Okay, it's, all right, thanks. All righty. Okay, that will take us to, I would have, someone would like to move in. We'll move to discuss and consider self-staffed representation of selection of beer slash wine and food vendors for the 2022 event season, including Wine Down Wednesdays, Thursdays and October. This one go to the community, I'm sorry, the community events, could you, I'm just curious. So. Kevin, perhaps you could help, so help out with this one, because you've had a lot of input in selection of vendors in the past, so are you running any deadlines for, what you're seeing? We timed on an issue, availability of vendors, is it not a problem, or how?
No, I sent out the vendor application for food and alcohol that we used in the past. I thought they were pretty good application that we led us. And then I received responses from six of the vendors. And they gave their first, second, their choices. And some only want to do beer, so that's why we choose two, because some only want wine and some only want beer, so it's a good match. And got together with a couple other staff members, and I threw all the scores here, and it came out really even, where each vendor gets two kinds of vendor alcohol throughout the whole season. And it was very even for, with food as well. So it actually turned out really fair and across the board.
And maybe. We're talking Thursday, Thursday. Wine Outlets has pretty much been kind of the.
Yeah, and you know, the Ambo Club is the sole, yeah, Ambo Club is the sole alcohol vendor for Wine Down. So even with that in play, everything worked out really well.
And no problems with not go over there, that's correct. That's, I didn't call any issues that came up, so.
With Oktoberfest, four of those six vendors applied. One was solely just for wine, so that person's going to get it by default, right? And then the three that wanted to bend for beer have all had a chance before, so I went with the oldest, who went in the first one, 2018, you know, because one was 2018, 2019, 2021. That's how that one was selected.
And I asked you, besides the Oktoberfest event released based on last year, is there, is there any concerns or issues with more than one vendor?
No, I mean, I felt, I think it would be that it obviously turned out well. I mean, more than two does not be learned, because then they don't make their money.
Right.
And more than two food vendors at a summer event wasn't very favorable. Oktoberfest is a different story, it was a much bigger event, so you get more than two food vendors, but it seems like our sweet spot is two alcohol vendors and two food vendors throughout the summer season.
Have you, have you sent this out to the vendors?
No.
Okay. And you have anything back up? And that's your food for Oktoberfest?
So for Oktoberfest food, we're, that's the only spot, we're not looking too great to this point. So I may have to go out there a little more and bend. But right now, Oktoberfest food, we have DC Cubs and River Street Tavern, and they've opened great food, food variety and selection. You know, we had Dairy Queen last year doing hot dogs, I got a range out again, and maybe they can, you know, or that's good, they could, with kids. Unfortunately, Louisiana's are too understaffed, they can't participate. But as we approach Oktoberfest, I'll check back with them and see if maybe they can improve then, maybe they're understaffed to improve then. At this time, both Rhodesies and Dungeons are too understaffed to participate. And the VFW usually has eight towards its tent, two for outdoors, so I need to reach out to them, so.
Yeah, last year, we just did terrible, it was really hot.
And I've already seen the menu, it's really good again.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were, okay, no. All them were, it was really good.
Yeah, they've become pros over the year.
Yeah. Is Duke's involved in the food for Oktoberfest?
Um, you know, Duke's is open and he's right there, so I don't know, to him, it never seemed to make sense to.
Despite he falls inside it in anyway.
Yeah. I'm not sure how German-inspired he can become.
Yeah. So it's sour.
He is Denver.
Yeah, and I believe partly his lasting contract is that he must be open up for all of the summer events and all of our community events, so.
To that point, Warren took over Monday, had expressed that if there was any case, and they have concern because those are not possible, so I did reach out to him and asked if he would commit to being open during the Monday, except he said he wouldn't. Or let's go, guys, or. Or guys are known, everyone's happy, yeah.
So that's one Monday per month, basically. All right, so then basically, the schedule that you had is looking good, we just got to maybe tweak it a little bit on the Oktoberfest food number wise?
Yeah, but I'm, no, that's not really intense, it's not memo, and we have time.
Yeah, but beyond that, we're looking forward to that. Does anybody have any other questions, or? All right, so we'll go with what has been established at this point?
And there's a consensus, and that's all out to the vendors, maybe now. Like, my concern is, we have the, it looks like one spot, a problem, one down the end there, do you have that covered? And I just want to make sure that's because of the ability. I can pray, I know that this isn't stupid, I'm seeing that. So you have an affirmative, stupid disaster, but. I can pray. Maybe can. So they're on for May 26th, for Thursday. Okay. At least in here. Yeah. Okay, so maybe it's just, maybe there's a disconnect between the manual sheet that went in here, so just want to check in on that.
So in the, in the, there's a lot for that one?
Yeah.
We want to run by Jason.
Yeah, that's, or anything else is great, it's just they're all being a one, it sounds like a natural look up in their place, so. Yeah, probably something.
Some of them in there, you can't see them that.
Great, we'll go before we got some more. Yeah, keep us posted, I can, you know, build it up. Okay, and then the last item that we have is G, another discussion event, or discussion item.
How can we discuss, um, and by direction of, like, about G?
Okay, so normally, years past, when I attended this event with the color guard provided by VFW, so can we reach out to them again, I guess is the question?
Yeah, I've reached out and in fact, this past weekend, we were gonna discuss to see what retirees would be available. So they're gonna be back to you on that, and they said that they would love to keep this tradition going.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of just waiting for them to respond on the availability and hope from there.
Okay, good, good. So then besides flag raising and a few words being said, is there anything else anybody can think of that might be able to, I don't know, expand a little bit on it? Is there, I don't know, if there's really, is anything really, that's realistic?
I mean, someone sings, and I've heard, like, you know, lyrics, was one of those people that did that. I don't know, it's very much the, uh, beginning, so it'd be good. She as herself was so singing though. Whatever she needed.
Yeah, very beautiful, national.
And I've heard that, Dan O'Leary is that pipe, so should I reach out there?
You may, uh, he is enabled, he certainly help others to, could, because he's part of a group that I think would, that's a.
Is that part of the flag game?
Uh, certainly, yeah, I don't see why, I mean, we'll just raise the Irish flag. But yeah, that's actually something to do, I mean, he would probably, if he was able to help, he certainly put us in pressure, but those could.
I would, yeah. And that program, he sees in your packet, so we would probably call something very close to that.
I'd go with the people who are doing, I have a really good idea, so.
Any other comments? Okay, well, we're going to, so here, that's the financial reports, the warrants list, wow, small numbers, huh? The warrants list is in a packet, any questions can be directed there. Brandon, oh, we'll start off then with the reports. I'll, I'll get it going with that. On Friday, I was able to attend the Online Association of Chiefs of Police banquet that recognized our own Chief Hoover as Chief of the Year. It was, it was really wonderful and it was really, you know, a big shot in the armed re study. And a lot of people, boy, he was extremely well-known in the law enforcement community, he really is, and so we were very lucky to have him. In addition to that, our own Sergeant Ritter was awarded a scholarship, the, I can't recall the name of the scholarship, there were two actually. But it is to the Northwestern University Staff and Command Scholarship for Patrol Staff and Command. So, and that's actually a very, from what I've learned, a very prestigious award. And so a number of people who have gone through that program, and it's nationwide, but it's helped with Northwestern, have gone on to very big things in the community. So we're all real proud of Sergeant Ritter for that as well. Additionally, I took part in, and along with Erica, in a cleanup, the township sponsored on the Braysway Woods property, Berkeley crushed from the golf course. We had a number of people from the library and.
Not Braysway Woods.
Oh, I looked up these things, okay, Braysway Woods is over there, and I wrote the guy's stuff, it's all, but yeah, right, right behind the, the library. We had a group from the library itself come out, a number of people from the township, Eric and I. A lot of really interesting stuff in those woods, I'll tell you. But we packed up a lot of everything. So it was well attended and effective, so that's really about all I've got at this point. So when we go around the table, any, I'll start second.
Uh, yes, I did notice that we, on the bike trail, that that started to be cut up, like they're improving the bike trail in front of Ayr, so that's good news. That was something that Phil was working with the county on, and I haven't seen if they've started cutting it up on the county side. I think there's two sets of property to go bumper up here. Yeah, because it's really bumpy, that's why cyclists are riding through the road there, is because the trail is so bumpy that you almost pop a tire on it, so. So that's just good news. And the terrace flooding issues, I wanted to follow up, that was something that residents asked us about, the flooding. Phil's looking into, there's a grant that we applied for to get some funding to fix that. And then I think we did that, but had to reapply for the grant, so I have to follow up and see if we have our reapplication in. But it sounds like that's still a possibility that we have funding for the terrace flooding issues.
Actually, and not to backtrack or anything, but Erica and I met with Representative Sean Kasdan last week and who came to visit, check out a number of items in the town, and we discussed that as one of the items that we really need help with, flood a bay along the river, along the Irish side. If you take a look especially south of the 72 Bridge, lay land goes right down to the waterline. And, but then across the river, they've got a nice, big, big 10-foot, you know, retaining wall. And so we need to adjust that and come up with some ideas, but as you can imagine, it's a big expense, so we're looking for the heavy hitters to help us out. Today.
Yes.
Okay, Chris.
I'm looking, I was like, bumped into Ryan Kuma the other day, and he said he would be willing to fund the new sticker for the Big Red Chair because it's so, like, he's like, photos it doesn't run, so he's like, well, it's ripped up, and I said, yeah, yeah, good point. I know we have the Earth Council too, but he's like, I'll be for it, I'll be the sign, and I'll pay for it. And I was like, okay, I would, so if you want to reach out, he's willing to donate or.
Or certainly the logo might.
The new sticker or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's looking a little like the shirt design.
Yeah.
You could probably get a new branded sticker to put on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying, I'll get a gift for the little art I got, so.
Thank you.
Especially an artist, just, you know.
It would be kind of.
I was asking a year ago, but.
All right.
Little busy.
Rich.
No report.
No report, hell, cow, can't we?
Um, just a reminder that this weekend is Mother's Day, which in Eastundy also means that it's the opening weekend of the depot market and the opening weekend of a lot of our weekly events and monthly events. So get on down to our sports market. If you have plants, how, garden plants or anything like that, that you have grown or have throughout the year produced produce, you can come on down and get a table for free, as long as you're a resident. And even if you don't, if you have a garage, it's a really reasonable people fee, so. Yeah, and then the other thing was, I did notice, I don't know, that there is a sign up on the car dealership that used to be Dr. Bata's office that he owned. And have they, I do, is there any kind of building permit for them to build anything out? We're talking about redoing some of this stuff, or is it just a sign at this point?
They got a sign permit.
Okay, yeah.
And the other thing was just cosmetic painting, though, when they did that.
Okay.
They replaced the parking lot plate.
Sure, sure.
So, but they were, I guess, kind of metal from all that, the anyways, and still code is striking the parking lot.
Okay.
And they, they did remove that, there was a recon containment wall that was falling on the property, and so they tore that out and it was graded. The lot down, that was a.
On the north side?
On the south side.
On the south side.
And so that was regraded and.
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up.
Good? Oh, great, okay, Sarah, what you got?
Very random question, where are we with updating the code, the dictates, the order of morals of this? We talked about this a lot from my time.
Um, I don't have a schedule for future agenda that I'm putting on for June.
That's okay, just, I figured it would be, it'd be loving to do things, but we might be a little bit, but impossible or more complicated than it is, might have, let me know.
I'm sorry.
We've talked about before, our meeting agenda setup is actually in our code, which is as like, we said, not when we turn fully. So.
It's actually fairly common, but it makes it more difficult if you want something a little different, you need to do a code amendment. So what I was thinking is, if you want to make the order, I would just assume recommend taking it out and saying that the manager in consultation with the president, that will prepare.
Oh, that's interesting.
And then you can do it whatever way you think makes sense, unless there's a certain meeting, public comment, you aren't here. And again, you can always amend it on fly too.
Yeah.
I'm angry.
And we can see, right, ladies?
No.
Nothing, Chris?
Uh, we are scheduled, we get the Platinum Fund Village Hall displaced next week, whether permitting. Whether it's not cooperating with the contractor, kind of keep bumping in a little bit, so. We'll know by Wednesday or Thursday if they're gonna be able to do it next week, one day that'll be. That's it?
Joe?
Employee is in town to do command drive improvements, so that should be finished up within a week or two. And then also, the trusty seller's question with Lion's Park, we did submit a pre-application to AIMA for funding. We'll have to wait to hear back from them, see if they're gonna allow us to go to application.
Do you know how long it typically is before they even start responding?
I would, I would say at least three months.
Okay, so this mold will be flying over here, probably. Will we have to reapply again?
Yeah, they're really. But we did get phase one, which was preliminary engineering several years ago, so we're at least in their system.
So phase one, as I recall, went a long way toward the baiting, the flooding that was happening down there in the south end of Lion's Park, and the homes that surrounded it. But we really need that site to be used. So I mean, is it just funding that we're waiting here? Engineering studies and access isn't an issue, it's like the art historical rather than others get added.
Yeah, all the assignments, it's harder, they're all written for other, or in place of them.
All right, and then we are.
I have one announcement, we have a staff member, Franco, sorry to mention that, it started last week, we're excited to have him, and. That's all.
Great, great. Yeah. Do you have any reports? So, any one?
Great, all of these done beat.
Okay, that takes us to public comment for not in general, is anybody in the audience who just, or, or you lost our group? Okay, uh, do we have need, excuse me, do we have need for a technical discussion? And can we confirm that? No, okay, then I will offer for a change motion.
That is, over here.
Thank you all.